Evening. I'd like to call to order our Canyon City Council meeting, June 7th, 2021. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Hockes.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I am very pleased now to be able to invite Amy Schmisher up. She has been selected by the City Council to replace former Councilmember Jim Meisner, and we will now have Amy sworn in.
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Amy Schmisher.
I, Amy Schmisher.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the state of Colorado.
Of the state of Colorado.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
Laws and regulations.
Laws and regulations.
Of the city of Canyon City.
Of the city of Canyon City.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
As City Councilmember.
Of City Councilmember.
Upon which I am about.
Upon which I am about.
To enter.
To enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. I think it's all right to give a round of applause. Well, Amy, I'd like to welcome you to the board. I have every confidence that you will do an amazing job. You've already proven yourself very well as a researcher, an editor, and somebody that's passionate about our community, obviously with the support that you have here and the far reach that you have in many avenues in helping us with the Fremont Center for the Arts, the Boys and Girls Club, and so many other entities that you're a part of. So, thank you. We're glad to have you here. Any other words from council?
Just welcome aboard.
Welcome. John stole it from me, but yeah, welcome.
Welcome all around.
Welcome, Amy. We're glad to have you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, and don't be afraid to speak up. Will do. Thank you so much. I'm really looking forward to working with each of you. Okay, it's now time for citizens' requests to speak to City Council. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the city on anything? It looks like we don't have anyone today, and so we'll move on to council member announcements. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to remind everybody that this Wednesday we have a general government meeting starting at 5:00 PM here in these chambers where we'll be talking about water billing and our use tax. In addition, we have a meeting June 14th, which is the first meeting of the Canyon City Energy Franchise Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Any other announcements from City Council? All right, I would like to take a moment to recognize that former councilmember Ron Bates has recently passed away. Ron Bates, he moved here in 1994. He worked at the Federal Bureau of Prisons. He was an integral part of the Marine Corps League in Canyon City. He was a very, he was very proud of being a City Councilmember because he moved around a lot, and he considered Canyon City his home. Serving on City Council was one of his greatest honors. The Marine Corps will have a celebration of life in the near future. Ron was termed limited the same time that I came on as City Council, as well as former Councilman Jim Meisner and former Mayor Preston Troutman. I know he was really passionate about serving our community, and we offer our condolences and love and wishes to his family for their loss. I would like to offer a brief moment of silence in his honor. Thank you all for your moment of respect for Council, former Councilmember Ron Bates. Is there anybody from his family that's here today? Okay, it looks like we're okay. We're gonna move on to, yes, go ahead. Yes, Mayor Pro Tim. There is, oh, I do need to clarify that I have appointed Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick as the Chair of the Energy Futures Committee, and so when that meets, you'll be in charge of running that meeting, and wish you the best of luck as we move forward with seeing what our possibilities are and researching where we, our energy future does lie.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to keeping the council updated on the progress the committee makes.
Thank you for being willing to step up to that committee, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick. We'll now move on to the consent agenda, and we'll go to Administrator Ryan Stevens. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular council meeting on May 17th, the special city council meeting on May 12th, May 17th for interviews, and May 24th, and then the Vision Committee meeting also on May 24th. 7B authorizes the mayor to appoint by acclamation Public Works Director Kim Swearingen to the GIS Authority Board and the Regional Transportation Planning. 7C awards bid S0321 NELCO 8102 plus to NELCO Company in an amount not to exceed $20,938.29. 7D awards bid 3421, 12-inch wafer-style swing check valves to Ferguson Waterworks in an amount not to exceed $7,502.40. 7E awards bid 3521 Dell ME 4024 Storage Array to X-Bike Technologies in an amount not to exceed $33,987. 7F awards bid 3621 Mobile Device Management Licensing to Insight Public Sector, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $8,679.22. 7G declares surplus and approves disposal donation of surplus equipment. 7H is your monthly budget summary for March 2021, and 7I is to receive and file a list of bills.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ryan, I see that we're getting a storage array. Is that, are those, is that a hard disk storage device essentially?
Yeah, it's a server and storage array, yes.
Storage for a server.
But yes, it's.
The, and, and something I'd like to bring up and, and just make sure that it remains before city staff and council. We've seen an awful lot about denial of service, hacking, you know, ransomware type issues, and I would just ask that you make sure that, that our IT department is, is up to speed on those things and that we have as many defenses in place as we need, and that if we, if there is some additional budget expenditure that needs to happen to achieve that, please don't hesitate to come back to council to discuss that with us because I'm sure that in this case, you know, let's be a penny wise and not a pound foolish.
Absolutely. We, our IT staff is always doing and deploying IT trainings in regards to cybersecurity and things like that, and if there are needs on a hardware side, we certainly bring those back to council.
And could you tell us a little bit about what, what is mobile device management software, I guess is what it is?
Yeah, the mobile device management software, that's for iPhones and the MDTs that the council uses. We have a software that helps with the imaging of those machines, as well as when we receive public records requests and things like that, being able to pull the information off that we, that we need.
Thank you. So it's, so it's essentially backup type service that it provides. Also, one other point I'd like to make is that our, our monthly budget summary is for March. Is, is there some reason we're not also seeing April tonight?
There is. So when we move to revenue collection by the states, we've not received April's revenue numbers yet.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to ask regarding Agenda Item A, the May 24th, 4th Planning Commission meeting, I believe that we only discussed Chapters 6 through 8, so I wasn't sure if tho, if those notes needed to be amended.
Yeah, and we can, we can amend those notes. So when the motion's made, I'll just need a motion amending those, those notes for the minutes on that.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Then I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent and agenda for this evening, including an amendment for Section 6 and 7 of the Comprehensive Plan at the Planning Commission and City Council meeting.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda and agenda for tonight's meeting, 6, 7, 2021, with an amendment to Item A, removing, is it Item A? Item A, removing everything but Chapter 6, 7, and 8.
A second. There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? A call vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Thank you, City Council. We'll now move on to the City Administrator's report. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go through this line by line because I know we have several public hearings and people waiting in the audience. One specific thing that I want to make sure that we pull out of, of the Administrator's report to highlight was a tabletop exercise that the Water Department did regarding, you know, emergency response to chlorine link up at the station, and we had a great turnout from all of our surrounding agencies, CDOTs, Colorado State Patrol, as well as emergency management from the county. This was put together by Michael Kroll from the county, as well as Travis Payne up at the water distribution plant. It was a really good exercise, and they did a great job putting it together, and I just want to say thank you to them for, for doing that. And we're, we're doing a lot of these different types of exercises, you know, planning and, you know, preparing for worst-case scenarios, hopefully that we never have to use it. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the report.
Councilmember Smith.
I just had a quick question. I've been getting a lot of questions from the public about the vetting process for 2A projects. Is there something online that I can refer them to on how they decide what streets are next?
We go off of the, the priority list based off of the damage from the original assessment, and then we bring projects for the, for the next year come before City Council during one of a general government or a vision meeting, and that's typically when we have those discussions.
Thank you.
Amy, can I check and make sure your new button's working? Okay, yep, you're on. I did have a question. In your report, it talked about how there's been an increase of the homeless at the parks, library, and museum, and wondering what we're doing to address that.
We're, we're continuing to, to reach out, use our coresponders, and try and provide services where we can.
I did notice last week that there was some camping out happening at the pavilion at Veterans Park again, and wanted to make sure we brought that to attention.
I appreciate it. I know, I saw officers driving through there today, so I know that's popped back up on the radar.
Okay. I just, I think we need to be consistent. Any other questions or comments for Ryan? Okay, then we're gonna move on. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say one thing. Ryan, I appreciate you taking a look at every department and giving us a breakdown of what's happening in those departments. I like that a lot. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Ryan, I have one other question for you, and this comes because a few people have asked me, it's like Brandon. On that property on Park Avenue, it's still a nice one, I think, to the people, especially across the street, and that's where one of them came to me and asked, and would like to have an update on that.
Yeah, so the property is still continuing, continually being monitored, and any new violations are being cited, and it, it's an ongoing process. But yes, there, there's still action moving forward.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I just want to say, it's really nice we have a full board today, and it feels really good. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I know it's hard. We have really busy schedules, but it's really nice to have everyone here. It is time to move on to a public hearing, and we're gonna start with item 9A, introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 13, Series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Rezoning Certain Real Property Within the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Lots 2 and 3, Central Park Minor Subdivision, Lots 1 and 2, Central Park Subdivision, Exemption Number 1, and Lots 1 and 2, Central Park Subdivision, Exemption Number 2, Canyon City, Fremont County, Colorado." So I will open the public hearing and invite our City Administrator to present the staff report.
And actually, I'll turn the time over to Patrick Mulready, the city planner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Rather than repeat the, the full length of the ordinance that's before you, I will summarize by saying the first public hearing that you have before you is a request for a rezoning for the properties with the addresses 2845, 2847, 2849, and 2851 Central Avenue, as well as 2798 and 2802 Elizabeth Street. The requested zoning is R3 High Density Residential. The current zoning on the property is R2 Medium Density Residential. Subject property is located between Field Avenue and North Reynold Avenue. Four of the lots front Central Avenue, the other two front Elizabeth Street. Originally platted as part of the Fruitland subdivision in 1991, these lots have been the subject of several recent land use applications. 2018, the owner subdivided the property into a five-lot minor subdivision. The following year, the same owners applied to rezone the property from RL Rural Living Residential to R2 Medium Density Residential, and at the same time subdivided the lots fronting Central Avenue to create four lots rather than the original two. Their intent was to facilitate the construction of duplex units on those lots. The six lots comprise approximately 3.71 acres in area. Although they have a relatively level grade, they do sit slightly lower than the grade of Elizabeth Street to the north. The property is currently vacant, as all structures have been, that had been on site were removed over the period of the last three years. The applicant seeks to rezone the properties to R2 Medium Density Residential, from R2 Medium Density Residential to R3 High Density Residential, as part of an assemblage of the property for multifamily residential purposes. The R2 zone does not allow multifamily residential or densities above approximately six dwelling units per acre. The assemblage component in this request is key to understanding the intent. The lots border an existing R3 High Density Residential zone situated immediately west of the subject property, with which the subject property shares an approximately 308-foot-long border. The owner of the lots, under consideration for this rezoning request, also represents the owner of the existing R3 zone property, and has an opportunity to merge these properties to do a true multifamily residential development, including a series of fourplex units. This is a concept rendering of the fourplex units being contemplated as part of the multifamily residential community on this property, although in your agenda package, you may have images of how these units have been built in other locations. The developer who has done, who has done these fourplex units elsewhere has expressed interest in building them in Canyon City as well, if there is an appropriately sized parcel. These properties are merged. It would result in an approximately 13-acre assemblage of land, which would be sufficient to accommodate the multifamily proposal at this location. Now, in terms of the rezoning application, rezonings are evaluated against the three criteria specified in Section 17.40. This is the, the criteria against which all rezoning requests are evaluated. Staff's evaluation of this request found that both criteria, one, quote, "The land to be rezoned was zoned in error and as presently zoned is inconsistent with the policies and goals of the Comprehensive Plan," and two, "The area for which the rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such an degree that it is in the public interest to encourage redevelopment," apply. Rezoning from R2 to R3 is still residential in concept, which means this request does not violate the city's current 2001-adopted Comprehensive Plan. It does mean an increase in density, which matches the density of the neighboring Mobile Home Park zoning to the north and east. It should also be noted, the multifamily residential is a type of residential that Canyon City has not seen built for a few decades, and that, and that goes to housing shortages identified in the UA COGS 2019 study. This region is lacking currently in attainable housing. Now with that, staff and the Planning Commission, Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this request on May 26th. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend that City Council, following a public hearing on this request, approve the rezoning request for the lots at 2845, 2847, 2849, and 2851 Central Avenue, as well as 2798 and 2802 Elizabeth Street, with the adoption of Ordinance 13, Series of 2021, on first reading, and set the second reading for June 21st, 2021. That would conclude the staff report. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. Also present to speak on behalf of this project is the applicant, Vicki Pollan.
Vicki, would you like to address City Council and talk about your request and your future plans? Oh, sorry to see you're in a boot.
Good vacation.
Oh.
Thank you. My name is Vicki Pollan, 1045 Indiana Avenue, Canyon City, Colorado. I've appeared before you several times on the subject properties, also known as Central Park Subdivision and all the other addresses included there, located on Central, east of Field. My efforts over the last two and a half years were spent subdividing, rezoning, advertising, and marketing on the local, state, and national levels through Rob Brown at FEDC, Michael Uerman at SCAD, Rick Harmon at Canyon City Economic Development, online and on various state and national opportunities-owned websites, enterprise zone sites, urban renewal sites, and I've also asked Ryan to please post it anywhere he can possibly do so. I also promoted the site through other realtors, the MLS, the Shopper Daily Record, personal contact with as many builders as I could, both locally and in the surrounding areas, by mail and phone. I even offered owner-carry terms or joint venture opportunities. My goal was to offer as many incentives to make the site more attractive for developers or investors to come to Canyon City and start building before the housing shortage happened. For whatever reason, there was no interest. I am still the owner of these great properties. Then COVID happened, and everything just stopped. Now the demographics of our area is exploding with new businesses, new residents, and hopefully new tourists this year. Our housing industry, however, is in crisis mode. Never before has the market in Canyon City been as accelerated or pricey as it is today. Houses are being sold in a few days with multiple offers and cash buyers. Rental properties are gone in hours. I have, however, finally received a letter of intent to purchase all of my lots, possibly the adjacent parcel, and a couple of the stipulations was that I introduce them to any staff at the city that's aware of this project, the adjacent property owner, and if I make application to the city to rezone my lots to R3 compatible with the larger lot, in case they can negotiate successfully. Also, I'm to provide coordination assistance with local development requirements, survey title planning, and council posting of notices, meetings, and attendance to those meetings, all of which I have completed. The proposed intent is to successfully negotiate and assemble the undeveloped land on that whole corner and turn it into much-needed multifamily units targeting the missing middle-income bracket. This potential project may also provide possible business opportunities on the commercial corner to service the central and northeast area of the Canyon City local population, without making them travel to the congested highway corridor services and go through that traffic. My properties are not located in the downtown corridor, nor the Riverwalk Improvement Area, but I am in the city limits with one of the last available large development sites and accessible city utilities. I have no government grants, loans, or outside funding available that I can find, and no other resources to access. I've done everything that I can do. I don't know at this time what the projected revenue to the city in tax dollars and monetary influence to our community will be. I do know that for the last several years, my personal property tax has increased sevenfold, which I gladly paid. I do not know, or I do know that we need this development started as soon as possible, and it would be a great asset in addressing our housing shortage. I do know that this zone change will be compatible with the large adjacent property and will allow a variety of housing options without coming before planning and council again. I promise. In closing, I do know this zone change will provide the highest and best use options for this property, and it'd be greatly appreciated if the city would request, would approve my request to rezone to R3. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki Pollan, for your words. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Reed.
I just applaud you so much, Vicki, for everything that you have done to get this out there. I'm so excited to see some solutions to some of these problems that we are facing. I'm just thrilled, and the fact that you've been able to work with all the people that you have and get this out there. I just think it's really exciting. Like, this is exactly what we've all been championing and hoping for, to start seeing these solutions. So thank you for your efforts in this. Thank you for taking, taking the time to be here multiple times, and, and don't feel bad if you did have to come back. We work for you, so come back as many times as you need to. But thank you so much for all of your efforts in this, and I just hope that it is extremely successful, and if there's other people like you out there, train them. Teach them how you did this. So thank you so much, Vicki.
Well, we hope we can pull it together if we can get everything agreed on, so.
Well, thank you so much for your effort.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a disclosure to make to City Council. I do serve on the County Planning Commission with Mr. Pollan. In reviewing this application, I did not take that professional relationship into account and can make a decision, I feel, you know, absent any, any personal, you know, knowledge, and so I just wanted to make that disclosure.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A question for Director Mulready. I was just curious, since the staff report, have there been any additional public comments from adjacent property owners?
When, when we went to Planning Commission, I reported in the staff report that we had not gotten any comments, and between Planning Commission and this evening, we have still not received any comments, emails, phone calls, anything.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dennehy. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here again. I just want to say that every time we've interacted with you, you have dotted your i's and crossed all of your t's, and you're still up here with a grateful attitude asking for help. I just want to put that out there. I just have a question. Is there a timeline on how long before you can rezon property? Because we didn't, we rezoned this not too long ago.
There's no time limit on how long a rezoning has to be in place before it can be overridden by another rezoning.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
And it was a year and a half? A year?
A year and a half ago, yep. Thank you.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Oh, I see you pressed "on behalf of Dolly."
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the bill that we will, if we have a motion, on the second whereas says the owners have submitted a complete application for to rezone the property, recommend that we strike the four in that motion.
Well, go ahead, Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve ordinance number thirteen, series of 2021, with the revision of striking the four from the second whereas.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And I do need to say that this public hearing is closed as well. So, congratulations and thanks for your resilience and dedication in seeing this through. I think the ultimate project is coming forth. I mean, it was the right time and the right thing, so.
Word triumph. Thank you.
Best of luck to you. We'll be here to help any way we can. Councilmember Dolly Gonzalez, could you press your button one more time just to see if it might be working? Yeah, you're back on. And then someone came up as HB. Yeah. So, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anyone. Okay. It's the cybersecurity.
Oh, maybe it's GTS.
Okay. Let's move on then. We are on item number B now, and this is to open the public hearing for introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance fourteen, series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Resoning Certain Real Property Within the City of Canyon City, Colorado." Patrick, I'll turn the time over to you again.
Madam Mayor, members of city council, our second public hearing this evening is also a rezoning request for a property located at 2203 Forge Road. The property owner is seeking to change the zoning from I District Light Industrial to R1 Low Density Residential. The subject property, there we go, subject property is situated on the west side of Forge Road behind the Interall Plant. It has a meets and bounds legal description, which indicates it has not previously been the subject of any subdivision request, and appears to have been created in its current configuration after the establishment of the Interall Plant. The property is approximately forty-one point three-three acres in area and surrounds the Interall Plant on three sides. It has a varied terrain with several hills on site, lots of native trees and shrubs throughout. It is accessed in two places. First, from a driveway off Forge Road, indicated, located at the south, located south of the Interall Building, and the second via an improved right-of-way on the property's northerly boundary. Its status as an industrially zoned lot appears to date back to the 1980s. This property is currently vacant and unimproved. An analysis of this zoning, of this rezoning reveals the degree to which the surrounding residential uses play a determination in what uses best suit this site. On the east side of Forge Road is the Wolf Park Subdivision, zoned R1 Low Density Residential. It also borders this site to the south, and to the west, you have an R3 High Density Residential Parcel with an existing single-family home upon it. Furthermore, the Dawson Ranch Plan Development, a large lot, single-family residential development, also surrounds this property to the west. The only industrial parcels located nearby are the Interall Plant, which this property surrounds, and the administrative offices for Howard Disposal located to the north. It should be additionally noted that the current comprehensive plan, updated in 2001, shows this property as residential, not industrial. That land use recommendation is also depicted in the comprehensive plan currently being adopted. Staff believes that the potential for land use conflicts is far greater if this property develops to what the current I Light Industrial Zone District allows versus what can be permitted under R1 Low Density Residential, and that potential now exists because of the history of residential development around this property. Now, again, in evaluating the rezoning of this property, zoning criteria are defined in section seventeen point four zero. There are three criteria, and again, as I mentioned in the previous staff report, staff's evaluation of this request found that both criteria one and criteria two apply in this circumstance. Both the current and anticipated comprehensive plan identify this property as residential in character, and the history of how residential uses have been encroaching on this property for decades supports this identification. Couple this with the reality that the high potential for land use conflict, should this property be developed for the I Light Industrial Zone District allows as permitted uses, this effectively constitutes a downzoning to R1 Low Density Residential, and it would seem to be appropriate under the circumstances. So with that, staff and the planning commission, and the planning commission did conduct a public hearing on this request in the evening of May 26th. Staff and the planning commission recommend that city council approve the rezoning request for 2203 Forge Road with the adoption of ordinance fourteen, series of 2021, on first reading, and set the second reading for the evening of June 21st, 2021. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I was looking around in the audience, and I don't seem to see the Langstons here this evening. They were before planning commission on May 26th.
All right, seeing that the Langstons are not here, are there, I would like to note that we do have a request to speak to council by Mike Romowski. You're welcome to come on up and address council.
I live at 463 Greenhorn Drive. I'm also the HOA Chair for the Dawson Ranch HOA. I'll make this real brief. The board has had several discussions about this rezoning request, and the board is very supportive of this zoning change. It's much more consistent with the properties of Wolf Park as well as Dawson Ranch. We also understand, per Mr. Mulready, that there will be additional approvals required for whatever plans are going to be implemented on that property. So, the zoning first, and then evaluate the development proposals. Any questions from me?
Looks like we're good. Thank you for being here representing the HOA.
Thank you, Mike.
Any questions from council? No questions? I have a quick one. It didn't sound like they had, like, the last public hearing, there was an interested developer. It sounds like there is not an interested developer at this time.
There isn't an interested developer at this time for the property. The property owner, when they made their presentation to planning commission, indicated that they've had a history of attempting to sell this property to let it develop for light industrial purposes, and they've been unsuccessful. And so they've decided that at this point, probably a change to R1 Low Density Residential would be most appropriate. It would be, in their opinion, the highest and best use for the property.
Thank you, Patrick. Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve ordinance number fourteen, series of 2021, on first reading.
Second.
Madam Mayor, I would just point out, if you would amend that to strike the four in the second whereas.
I amend my motion to strike the four in the second whereas.
Is that going to be consistent for tonight?
That's, we're done with that one.
So, there was a motion, and there was a second. I do need to close the public hearing, and now, if there is any discussion, if not, then I will call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Thank you, city council. It passes unanimously. Thank you for your work on this, Patrick.
He's been busy.
And we, yeah, he has. Five public hearings. I mean, this is really amazing, I mean, the changes that are happening in Canyon City that, to hopefully meet a need that we have for housing.
Yeah.
We are now on item number C, and I will read the entire thing. Introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance fifteen, series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Section Seventeen Point Two Four Point Zero Five Zero of the Canyon City Municipal Code by the Addition of a New Subsection One O Three, Allowing the Construction of an Accessory Dwelling Unit on the Property Located at Eight Two Six Griffin Avenue, also known as Lots Fourteen, Fifteen, and Sixteen, Except Ten Feet Off the East Side of Said Lot Sixteen, Block Two, Fairier's Addition to South Canyon, Fremont County, Colorado."
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry that you had to read all of that this evening. Unfortunately, we are asking that you continue this to a date certain of July 6th. We discovered earlier today, as a result of Councilmember Schmeizer going around this weekend to look at the various properties, that the posted sign that would have advertised the council hearing date, which was in fact provided to the applicant, which in fact the applicant did provide us with the affidavit that they had posted it, was removed. And when I contacted the applicant to find out why, we discovered that the applicant was unaware that the two signs that they were given were for different meetings before different boards, and therefore both of them, or at least the one for city council, needed to stay through today's date. So, in effect, we've had a notice bust as a result of this, and because a new sign needs to be posted on site for at least fifteen days, we can't reschedule this to the 21st. It's got to go to July 6th.
So, will we need to make a motion to extend it?
We will need you to make a motion to continue this because there was also a published notice that we don't want to have vacated by this.
And this is to, which date?
July 6th.
July 6th. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Madam Mayor, I move that we postpone this discussion of ordinance number fifteen until July 6th.
Second.
Spend a motion and a second. I'd like to apologize to our applicants for the misunderstanding. That's a real disappointment for everybody. Any discussion by council? I'll close this public hearing and call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Patrick, is there anything I need to be aware of on the next one before I read it?
Ma'am.
This one is item D, introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance sixteen, series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Section Seventeen Point Two Four Point Zero Five Zero of the Canyon City Municipal Code by the Addition of a New Subsection One O Four, Allowing the Construction of an Accessory Dwelling Unit on the Property Located at Two Seven Seven Three Cherry Street, Fremont County, Colorado." I will open the public hearing. I do want to say that inadvertently, I did have conversations with the applicant as fellow soccer moms at soccer games, and so I will not participate in the public discussion, but I will facilitate the discussion. Patrick, we're ready to turn the time over to you.
Certainly. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, our third public hearing this evening is for the approval of a special review use to allow an accessory dwelling unit at Twenty Seven Seventy Three Cherry Street. Subject property is located at the northwest corner of Cherry Street and North Reynold's Avenue. It was platted originally as Lot Twenty One of the Reynold Subdivision in East Canyon in 1965, before being annexed into Canyon in the early, in the early 1970s, when East Canyon disincorporated as a community. Property is approximately twenty-one thousand thirty-three point eight square feet in area, which exceeds the minimum lot size for residential lot in the R1 Low Density Residential District. It has effectively two driveway cuts to Cherry Street, a paved driveway in front of the house capable of parking two vehicles, and a gravel driveway immediately west of the paved one, leading to the detached carport. This gravel driveway is capable of parking at least six vehicles. Accessory dwelling units are secondary dwelling units located on property with principal dwelling units already on site. Canyon City has generally been accepting of ADUs, given that the city has a lack of quality attainable housing. In Canyon City's current zoning code, ADUs are processed as special review uses so as to ensure they do not impact the quality of life for surrounding properties in the neighborhood. The applicant is proposing to create a second dwelling unit on a new building located generally behind or to the north of the existing carport. Now, special reviews are defined in section seventeen point two four point zero three zero B. Special review uses are evaluated against six criteria, ranging from size and location to traffic generation and parking, to buffering, to the potential to generate nuisance conditions upon neighbors. Staff has evaluated this ADU proposal against those six criteria, and in the planning commission staff report, which you have in your agenda packets this evening, found that the proposed ADU will be harmonious and in keeping with the residential nature of the subject property, and will not create land use conflicts with surrounding properties. Therefore, staff and the planning commission have recommended that city council approve the proposed special review use for an ADU at Twenty Seven Seventy Three Cherry Street with the adoption of ordinance sixteen, series of 2021, on first reading, and set the second reading date for June 21st, 2021. That would conclude the staff presentation. I believe Paula Peterson, the property owner, is present this evening to speak on the application as well.
Right, and Patrick, while we wait for Paula to come up, I would like to note that this is a pretty lengthy process to put an ADU on someone's private property, and we have this one, and then item F as well, but with the comprehensive master plan that we're doing, this will be much easier for future developments.
This was explained to all three of the applicants that we had for ADUs coming before planning commission on May 26th and council this evening. All three of them understood that with the adoption of the new code later this summer, these would become administrative reviews as a conditional use permit rather than a special review use that would require an ordinance. All three of them have expressed an interest in wanting to get started building this so that they could maximize how much time they had over the summer in construction of the unit. So, they elected to move forward before the change was made to the code.
Thank you, Patrick. Paula, would you like to address council?
Well, and it's just so much fun filling out paperwork, right? And I love you guys. So, we are planning on doing this with your blessings. And our plan, actually, I've served on several different boards, I've been part of the chamber and all that fun stuff. One of the things that, with the community collaborative, when I was working with St. Thomas More on that, was they talked about the lack of housing for the medical professionals. And so our goal is to create this and hopefully secure a contract with Centura, or with Sylvista, or with the traveling nurses, and our hope is to do a long-term lease for medical travelers' relocation housing for medical professionals in our community. We plan on fully furnishing it, because that would be one of the requirements with them. I'm kind of a nerdy little Fremont County native, so I've already started, you know, looking for movie posters, so that I can help fill that little gap that we lost with Buckskin Joes. And we plan on kind of filling the cottage with great history about Fremont County, so that if they are travelers, or they are people who are possibly looking to relocate, we can just, you know, reel them right in, so.
Thank you, Paula. Are there any questions for her? All right. Well, I will close this public hearing then and ask for a motion. Councilman Smith.
Madam Mayor and council, I move that we approve ordinance number sixteen, series of 2021, on first reading.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Yes, I would just like to point out that in the material that we were given, the first page, the summary is actually from, although this is titled Ordinance Sixteen, the summary is from Ordinance Fifteen, but nonetheless, all the other materials in the packet are appropriate to this application.
And sir, we gave you the updated prior to the meeting, and it was left at your desktop.
Oh, thank you. I have it.
Yeah, so we did fix that.
Then I have it right here.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. So that wasn't too painful, right?
No. No, thank you.
Congratulations on your project. Wish you the best.
Yeah, thank you. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, I don't know, a couple of years ago, we were, we were talking about rezoning um an apartment above a garage. John, I believe it's near your, your home. Um, if they were to come to us now, would this be easier for them to rezone? Because I don't think we rezoned them. We, we denied that.
Well, the, this isn't a rezone. This is a, an ADU, additional dwelling unit.
So, okay, so if, if they were to, if they were to come to us for an A.
ADU.
ADU, A U D. Um, would it be easier for them?
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know when the last time ADUs, uh, ordinance was, was changed, but um, after we revisit the code, um, as Patrick mentioned earlier this summer, uh, it will be even easier.
Yeah. I'm trying to, is that the, where the property owner lived in Hawaii?
Um, no.
I think they were seeking a variance.
Or do they live in Hawaii? Yes, they do live in Hawaii, and they were seeking.
So they were seeking a variance for something, so it wasn't as simple.
So people could live above that, um, garage.
So I, what, um, I'm unsure exactly the process that was followed, but I do know that it is being used as an ADU at present.
It is? Okay. It seems like we had denied it, but, all right. Thank you.
Maybe they found the avenue they needed to go through.
I hope so. I hope so.
Or they just got ratted out. But irregardless, we're going to move on to item number E, letter E, introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance seventeen, series of twenty twenty-one, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Section seventeen point two four point zero five zero of the Canyon City Municipal Code by the addition of a new subsection one oh five allowing the construction of an accessory dwelling unit on the property located at three one five North Nineteenth Street, Fremont County, Colorado." I'll open the public hearing and invite Patrick to address us.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, our final public hearing this evening is also a request to approve a special review use for an accessory dwelling unit at three fifteen North Nineteenth Street. Subject property is located in the west side of North Nineteenth Street, approximately two hundred and fifty feet north of the intersection of North Nineteenth and Franklin Avenue. This lot was platted as parcel A of the Park Avenue subdivision, and the Fremont County accessories records indicate that the existing residence on site was constructed in nineteen ninety-three. The property is approximately thirty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine square feet, which is also well in excess of the minimum lot sizes for R-one zone lots. This property is situated in a portion of Canyon City where large lot residential is in fact the norm. Franklin Avenue serves the role of, of a transitional street separating the largely non-residential highway-oriented uses to the south from the large lot neighborhood north of Franklin. It should also be noted that like many lots taking access from North Nineteenth Street, this lot is also a flag lot where the skinniest portion is the street frontage, and the lot gets wider as it transitions back away from the street. The lot south of the subject property is similarly a flag lot, and it is under the same ownership as the subject property here before you this evening. Accessory dwelling units, as I mentioned in the previous summary, are secondary dwelling units located on a property with the, a principal dwelling unit already on site. Canyon City has generally been accepting of ADUs, given that the city has a lack of quality attainable housing. In Canyon City's current zoning codes, ADUs are processed as special review uses so as to ensure they do not impact quality of life for surrounding properties in the neighborhood. The applicant is proposing to create a second dwelling unit in a new building located in what is presently their front yard, although it will be set back more than the minimum required twenty-five feet for all structures. The lot is large enough to encompass this new structure and to accommodate parking for the principal residents and the accessory residents. Now with that in mind, as I mentioned previously, section seventeen point two four point zero three zero B defines special review uses uh, that are evaluated against three, six criteria ranging from size and location to traffic generation and parking, to buffering, to the potential to generate nuisance conditions upon neighbors. Staff has evaluated this ADU proposal against those three, against those six criteria, and found that the proposed ADU will be harmonious and in keeping with the residential nature of the subject property, and will not create land use conflicts for surrounding properties. So with that, staff and the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this item on May twenty-sixth, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve the proposed special review use for an ADU at three fifteen North Nineteenth Street with the adoption of ordinance seventeen, series of twenty twenty-one, on first reading and set second reading for June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. That would conclude the staff report. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. I've been looking around in the audience, and, oh, there's Mr. Molino. He is here this evening.
Come on up and address council, will you?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, sir, and all of you wonderful people. I'm Jerry Merlino, and I've lived here since ninety-two, uh, in that, uh, particular lots and whatnot. Had a lot of ambition for it, but I'm getting older. And so those ambitions have gotten down to the fact that my wife and I would like to do a bit of retirement and running around, and a small located house like this, uh, I'm thinking seven hundred square feet of house, basically one bedroom, uh, gives us an opportunity to either rent it out, uh, additional income, uh, possibly rent it to someone to help us do gardening and taking care of the back field. It's, well, we just cut hay, and we had eighty bales of hay, so it's, it's a task. You water it, pick it up. And so that's pretty much all we really have in mind for it. Nothing too serious, but uh, being large enough to be able to do something with it. And I thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you for being here.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Um, I just have a quick question, uh, about a report that came back from city engineering. It said it appears to be in a floodplain. Um, will need a permit.
So what, what happens at the time of building permit issuance is that the building plans are drawn up to ensure that the property is built at an elevation that raises it above the floodplain level.
Okay.
So that, that can be compensated for through the building permit process.
All right.
But in order to get to the building permit process, we have to have the special review use approved first.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I saw that as well. Councilmember Gonzalez and Mr. Molino, I just wanted to make sure that you recognize that because that property is in the floodplain, that there will need to be adjustments made to your construction plans to accommodate that floodplain.
That was my concern, was that he'd build something and not be aware.
Yes, want to be sure they know ahead of time, upfront, absolutely. Any other discussion from council? I'd like to close this public hearing and ask for a motion. Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve ordinance seventeen, series of twenty twenty-one, on first reading.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
All right, it has been approved by unanimous vote. There will be a second hearing, but congratulations and good luck on your, um, your venture. We are going to move on to item number ten, and this is ten A, Fremont Park Connection Trail, and the official name, just as some backstory. A beautiful new stunning trail is being built that's connecting Tunnel Drive to Fremont Peak, and Rex has been working really hard on it, as well as a lot of other people. And we put it out to the public to vote on a name. They didn't like any of our names from the first round, so we put it back again for a second round of names, and then there was some voter fraud happening. And so we felt like we should probably bring it to council for an official decision because it is a special trail, and we want to make sure we do it justice and to the public opinion as well. Rex, would you like to take it from here?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council.
Is your mic on? It's on now? Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council. Um, yes, all that is true. This, uh, hopefully this evening, we can finally come to a consensus and get this incredible trail named. Um, like the mayor said, uh, we did have some voter fraud on the last day of voting, but uh, it seems, uh, from ten forty-one P M, closing day, one of the, uh, the trail names that was in fifth place all of a sudden catapulted to first place with over a hundred and sixty-two votes in just a few, few hours.
From, you know, like Mickey Mouse and Donald Trump and all these different people.
Terrence Bueller, Forrest Gump voted as well. But uh, during, during the two weeks of this, uh, poll, there were three trails that rose to the top. The first being Tunnel Vision, the second Royal Cascade, and the third was Big Horn Trail. Um, Tunnel Vision had held the lead, um, for most of that two-week period, in fact, all of it. And secondly, it was Royal Cascade, and the Big Horn Trail kind of swapped from second to third as the, as the poll progressed. So, um, with the voter fraud or whatever you want to call it in mind, um, I would like to ask council just to vote to take the top three choices, which were Tunnel Vision, Royal Cascade, and Big Horn Trail, and just put it to a vote so we can finally name this trail. And uh, on a personal note, if I had a vote, which I know I don't, it would be Royal Cascade because I think that best describes the trail that's coming off of Fremont Peak. It's basically, it's full of switchbacks, and it's reminiscent of a cascading stream down a mountain. So that's just my personal opinion, but how, Madam Mayor, you want to conduct the, uh, vote is up to you.
Well, Rex, before we go to a discussion from council, I'd like to hear your input, but do you want to offer any other insights to this trail when it will be done and?
We, right now, as of June first, the trail is closed to all uses. And that is because it's, uh, the lambing season for the big horn sheep. It'll be closed from June first until August first. And at, on August first, it'll open to the public from nine A M to five P M. And it's closed after that, and then in October, it opens up, um, from dawn to dusk. Uh, the trail is getting closer and closer to being completed. It's, uh, our trail builder, Steve Thomas, has done an incredible job, but, um, and he comes to me every week and he says, "I'm sorry, we're not making more progress. I'm sorry, we're not making more progress," but the terrain up there is just incredibly difficult to work in. But we're, we're close and we're confident that by August first, when the trail reopens, it'll be ready to go to, for the public, so. That's what, that's what we're hoping for.
And it's a challenging trail, too.
It's a challenging trail. It's an absolutely incredible, stunning trail. If you haven't been on it, it's closed to the public right now, but uh, first of August, need to get up there, and I can certainly give you guys photos and pictures that I've taken, and uh, it's, it's absolutely incredible. It's, Steve Thomas is one of the best trail builders that there is in the nation. He's built trails.
We're super lucky to have Steve Thomas here, and
Absolutely.
just want to know you have, you also have a lot of passion and heart and soul put into all of our trails, but this one in particular.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's, it's, Steve says it's one of the most difficult builds that he's ever been on, so, but the end result is going to be well worth it.
It'll be worth it in the end?
Yes, indeed.
Okay.
And as we get close to that opening day, we will schedule a ribbon cutting as well.
Fantastic. Councilmember Reed.
Okay, so I have two things. One, whoever was passionate enough about the trail name to go through the time to cast a hundred and sixty-one votes, I would just invite you, wherever you are, to come participate in building and helping or volunteering or something like that, because clearly someone was pretty passionate about it. I mean, that took some time. Um, the other thing is, is why can't Rex have a vote in the name? I mean, he has all this. It's only council, even though we, I mean, we gave it to the public ones. And if the public wouldn't have had, twice, and if the public wouldn't have had voter fraud, then that's what would have picked it.
Cory.
Because the City Council is the governing body. You can certainly give deference to Rex's opinion as you deem appropriate, but ultimately, the vote has to be yours.
Well, thank you for all of your effort and time that you've put into it, Rex. I appreciate it.
It's going to be incredible.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Oh, um, so will it be closed every year from, from June to August?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's for the lambing season.
Yeah.
The, the trail actually goes through a critical, uh, lambing area, so that's the reason for the closure.
Wasn't sure if that would be blocked off and open for next year, but that's okay. It's a good time for biking.
It, like I said, it, it will open August first.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I know I for one am very excited about this trail. I love running on Tunnel Drive and just watching the progress as it, as it slowly creeps up the hill. Um, I'm wondering, Cory, if it's possible if we could make a motion and vote to allow Rex to name the trail, if that is something that, that council is permitted to do. I think that that was a wonderful idea.
You certainly could do that.
Of Councilmember Reed's.
Well, I think that you would vote to name it Royal Cascade in his honor. Yeah, that would be a motion if you wished to make it. Is there any discussion from council? Would someone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
I'd like to make a motion to allow Art Parks Director Rex Brady to vote on this subject of, uh, naming Fremont Peak Connection Trail.
Well, I don't think it's allowed to vote it, but you just make the move, motion to name it
To name it.
Royal Cascade.
To name it Royal Cascade.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? And I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
There's been a unanimous vote. Congratulations, Rex Brady. You now have the Royal Cascade. Your dreams literally have come to fruition.
Well, I think now I'm going to have to think about it. I might reconsider. Royal, Royal Cascade.
Mickey Mouse, Mickey Mouse Trail.
I can finally get the signage started, so. This has been months in the making. Congratulations, Rex. Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Rex slowly did have a dream, a visionary dream.
I did. That's the truth.
That's the truth. So thank you, council, for honoring Rex in that manner.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Um, we are now going to move on to ten B, and this is a first reading and adoption by title only, resolution eleven, series of twenty twenty-one, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of Canyon City, Colorado Appointing Qualified Individuals to Serve as Board Members of the Four Mile Ranch Metropolitan District numbers two, three, and four." Cory Hoffman, our attorney.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, you have three metropolitan districts within the boundaries of the city that are inactive and do not have any board members, uh, Four Mile Ranch Metropolitan District, districts two through four. State law specifically contemplates this happening and allows you to make the appointment, but those appointments have to be of individuals who are qualified. And so in your packet, you have information provided by the metropolitan districts and their council that identify three individuals that are qualified to serve as members of the Board of Directors of the Four Mile Ranch Metropolitan District, numbers two, three, and four. So if this resolution is approved, those, um, three individuals will become the directors of the three districts, and the districts can begin to do some work in what is largely undeveloped property. Um, their counsel is here tonight if you have any questions, as is a representative. Um, and I'm certainly able to answer any questions you might have as well.
Um, I would like to invite the applicants. If you wish to address council, you're welcome to. You've certainly earned it. It's been a long meeting for you all.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Joan Fritchy. I'm with Fritchy Law. Um, I represent the, um, two majority property owners within the, the three, um, the underlying property of the three districts, which is Sun Canyon LLC and FMR Golf LLC. So, um, as Mr. Hoffman stated, the, uh, the terms of the prior board members have lapsed. There are no directors, and so the districts are not able to take any activity. Um, and at this time, the developer and property owner is interested in, um, moving forward with the project, and also, um- the project, and also there's an outstanding agreement with, I'm not sure of the name, but the Canyon City Urban Renewal Authority. And we'd like to have a board that can approve that I G A. and assist the city with its urban renewal authority. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Dennis Minchow is with me. He is one of the candidates and also represents the property owner.
Dennis, you're welcome to address Council if you wish.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of Council. This has been a long time coming since the, you know, as you're all well aware, the project has been through a couple of different owners, bankruptcies, different things like that. And we're just, I'm trying to assist the owner who is out of state in trying to get the project moving again. When we were approached last year by Mr. Hoffman about an agreement with the urban renewal district and including some of the Four Mile Ranch commercial properties within the urban renewal district, we were fully supportive of that, but found out that there was no way that it could be approved without the agreement. And so we're trying to get a board together to approve that document and a couple of other documents that the, you know, the state requires metro districts to do on an annual basis. And, you know, we're looking forward to having some more development out at Four Mile Ranch because there's a lot of interest in the Canyon City area to have more lots out at Four Mile Ranch. I'm more than happy to ask, answer any questions about this or the project itself if you so desire.
Thank you for being here tonight, Dennis.
Thank you.
And we do have Mayor Pro Tim Hammack with a comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is for you, Cory. So the whereas, so cites a C R S reference, and it says the City Council is authorized to appoint qualified individuals. What is our obligation or to determine qualifications? Do we need to do that? Can we go off the representation that the individuals are qualified or what?
You can, and you have the documentation in your packet which shows their ownership of property within the area.
So that's the qualification that?
Yes, sir.
And being a warm bodied counts for an awful lot also.
And property owner.
And property owner, a warm bodied property owner.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question for Ms. Fritch, Fritchy, sorry, apologies, with a difficult last name myself, I should have paid a little bit closer attention to your pronunciation. I noticed that in the second to last paragraph in your memo, you mentioned that there are no other individuals qualified as electors within the district, and I'm just districts. And I just wanted to ascertain, so there are no other property owners in the districts under question?
So to be an eligible elector of a special district, you have to be registered to vote? You have to be a person, a natural person. You have to be registered to vote in the state of Colorado, and you have to have a real property interest within the boundaries of the district. And under state law, a contract purchase with an obligation to pay property taxes qualifies an individual as a property owner. So there are currently only these three individuals that meet those qualifications within the property.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Then I will call for a motion. Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve Resolution number eleven, series of twenty twenty one.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? And I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Job well done tonight, very well. I'm really excited about today's meeting and glad again to have Amy on board, and in honor of Ron Bates, this meeting is adjourned.